Seven, two thousand and eighteen. And I want to get started right away because I feel like a teacher writing my schedule out today. I want to do budget between three and four. If we can possibly be finished by four, I'd like to be. At four o'clock, I'd like to do the accountability. At four thirty, I'd like for Tony to do his presentation. And if we don't have time for questions after that, because at five o'clock or between five and five fifteen, I'd like to go into close because we have, we need to do it closed and it, and we have somebody from the city coming over. And so that's why we want to do close during that time. If we need to come back in here after the formal meeting for follow-up questions and suggestions or whatever about Thurgood Hermitage, we can come back into this room after the formal meeting to do, to follow up our questions and stuff, okay? Is that all right? I just want to try to take this, stick to the schedule if that's possible. Okay, so my first thing is, on our agenda is budget. Dr. Spence?
Yeah, well, we're going to turn it straightaway over to Mr. Hansker and his group. We're going to go over the agenda and answer some questions that we received from you all. So Farrell?
Thank you. Chair Walton, Anderson, and Vice Chair is not here yet. Remember, there's school board, Dr. Spencer, my Pearson friends in the audience here. The agenda is very short agenda. We were wanting to get through our part of the agenda very quickly. And then the last part is just the board balancing the budget. The first agenda item is, and this is not on the screen, but we've provided you a summary analysis of the House and Senate's budget proposals. And it's compared to the governors. And it looks like this spreadsheet. Dr. Spence found this analysis. It's a great analysis. It's pretty detailed. It's broken down into a format that I think you'll appreciate because it's, it's listed the revenues and resources. And then it, it lists healthcare. It lists those things related to K through twelve education. It lists compensation. And then it's got a capital part of the budget. It's social services. And it's a breakdown on higher education. So it's a more comprehensive analysis than we would normally do. And I thought, and Dr. Spencer and I thought you'd appreciate this more comprehensive analysis. And we're not going to go through it, but it's there for you. And if you have questions, we'll answer them. Go right to the questions and our responses to those questions that you sent to us. And the, the first question came from Commissioner McDonald. And he asked, what would be the cost to outfit all schools with metal detectors for both students and the public entry? I'm going to give you the equipment answer to that. And then I'll tell you that there's some additional costs that we will still have to analyze. But to equip these, doesn't include elementary, just the middle schools and the high schools. It's over a million and thirty thousand dollars to put the appropriate equipment into these schools.
What was that again?
Over a million and thirty thousand dollars. There's significant cost to staffing for this type of equipment, which includes training, additional staffing. And that number could far exceed the million dollars. We're in the process of doing more formal analysis on that. That's going to take some time. We're having to reach out to other organizations that maybe have these things in place. We've gotten cost estimates for the equipment because we've, we've got that information from suppliers. So that's the information on the metal detectors.
Excuse me, Farrell, you said this is just for middle school?
High schools and middle schools. Obviously, if, if it was determined, if this is something that the board wants to pursue, you want to see elementaries included, you can get that additional cost.
Is that one metal detector per school or several?
No, it depends on the size of the school.
Right.
For example, high schools, it may be three or more. Middle schools could, could be two, three or more. So it, it depends on the size, how many entry points, so, which depends on the building.
Okay.
Those kinds of things.
All right. I was just wondering because I, you can't get them all into just one egg, one entry place.
That's correct.
And, but that does include personnel that would?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not include staffing. It includes solely the equipment.
Okay.
Ms. Manning asked how much money is budgeted for overnight travel and all costs associated with the reason for travel included, but not limited to event fees, course costs. Course costs. So we don't have a breakdown by those individual, but the cumulative cost of those object codes that are considered, that could have overnight traveling. We've given you the adopted budget number for seventeen, the actual expenditure for seventeen, the adopted budget for the current year, and what's proposed.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald asked, what would be the cost to have Virginia Beach City Public Schools included in disparity study that the city council is now contracting to do? And we're going to show you a brief presentation because we need you, to answer this question, you need to know what we're already doing with regard to our procurement practices that might relate to disparity, diversity of contracts, et cetera. The cost to probably piggyback and participate in the city's disparity study would be in, in an excess of two hundred thousand dollars. Kevin? Kevin, seriously, you all seen Kevin Cora, Director of Purchasing and Procurement.
Good afternoon. Farrell asked me to come, well, let's be honest, Farrell's my boss. He told me to come here today and talk about what we do to encourage our diversity spend in the school system and also how we track that. And what, one thing, what I'm going to talk about in my office includes everything but the big CIP construction projects and professional services like architectural engineering services. Those are done through Tony's office. So the spend I'm talking about are, are everything else. And, you know, one, we make sure that all of our processes are fair and open to everybody. We're required by school board policy to get four or more quotes on anything over thirty thousand, up to a hundred thousand. Anything over a hundred thousand either needs to be formally bid or we need to do an RFP. Those are posted on our webpage. Those are electronically distributed. We love competition, so we work hard to, to get competition. And we go to three to four expos a year with vendors, small, woman-owned, minority vendors. We meet with anybody who wants to know how they do business with us. You know, we invite them to come. We'll sit down and look at what they sell. We'll tell them how we buy what they sell, if we do buy what they sell. And we'll direct them to whoever the decision makers are. You know, some companies that contact us are, they do fundraising. That's a site-based decision, so they need to go to the schools to do that. If we do buy what they sell, you know, we'll show them our contracts. We'll show them our prices. And, you know, we'll make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in those things. And we do track, you know, I gave you a copy of this report. This is the last year we completed on that. It's fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. We generate this every year. We, we outsource this. We have to pull data from four different systems and compile it to produce this report because we spend money through our, our general ledger, which is Oracle system. We have information that's in our procurement software. We have spend that goes through our procurement card program. And then the schools have a school-based accounting program called SFO. And they spend about ten million a year through that. So we have to get this data from all four of these systems, these programs, and bring them together and get them scrubbed and match up the vendor names and all that. So it takes some time. But this is the report and we, we produce this every year. We share it with the Minority Business Council. It comes to you at some point in the packet. You may have seen it before. And, and you can see our diversity spend, small, woman-owned, minority companies for two thousand, fiscal year sixteen was twenty-two million dollars. And that was about almost sixteen percent of our total spend. If you look at the, the first pie chart on there, you'll see, you know, the ratio. And then if you look at the one below that, you'll see that eighty percent of that diversity spend is with small businesses. Then it has a breakdown with, you know, female-owned, small female-owned, all those things. And it breaks it down. So we track this every year as we go through. You can see on the second page, this bar graph, it shows how that goes up and down. One point I want to make is we report on what our processes render. We don't do anything to manipulate this. This is the way when we enter vendors into our system, they can come in and, and register themselves and they identify themselves as being small, woman-owned, disabled, veteran-owned. And we track all that and we report on it. But we're required by state law to award to the lowest responsive responsible bidder on a bid and the highest ranked offer with an RFP. So we don't have any ability to manipulate who gives this, who gets this funding. This is just a report on where the money's spent. There's no preferences given or anything. And really, you know, sixteen percent is a pretty good amount of, of that spend. The city, you know, the, the group, the, some of the minority companies, it's not as large as, you know, just the small businesses. Are there any questions on this? There's a lot of data here. On the back part, it's got a breakdown by every vendor that we do the, do business with and how much we spend as it goes through.
I see no questions.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to put this in perspective, this sheet, and I wasn't sure if I was going to have a visual or to put this up here for you, but we spend money in several ways. Through our purchasing software, we have what we call open market purchase orders. That's where we have to go out on the open market and determine the value of something. And we spend about forty-three million dollars with those. We have another type of purchase order and it's called a blanket release and it's highly automated. These are term contracts that my, my office negotiates and all the pricing is fixed for things that we buy across the school system, office supplies, computers, copiers. There's a whole bunch of them. And we do about eight point two million through those. And, and those things just, you know, kind of fly through the system. The RPA, that direct payment process, you can see that's two, almost two hundred and fifteen billion. But that's, that's how we pay for our utilities. We pay for our employee benefits. You know, there's a lot of money that goes through that, but they can directly make those payments off of contracts. We do about eleven million through procurement cards and we do about ten million through the school-based accounting software. So when you look at that, you know, our, our entire spend for a year is two hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars. But one thing I wanted to show you, if you look at the breakdown on the RPAs, the, the direct payment process is two hundred and fourteen million, but the biggest thing we pay for out of there are employee benefits. This is, this is our health insurance contracts, the dental contracts. There's absolutely no potential to spend that with anything other than a corporation. So that's a hundred and forty million. Fifteen million of that's utilities. We make the payment to CSEP is our part of that, that joint venture with Norfolk. We pay TCC for, that's the ATC. We pay our share of that and we pay for some course, some dual enrollment courses, WHRO. You know, when you start breaking those things out, fuel for the buses, food service, the items that go to food service, you can see two hundred and sixty million quickly gets down to nineteen million because of the size of those payments. And most of those are things that we don't have any ability to spend with any, any of the diversity vendors. And I didn't do, I didn't have the time to do a huge amount of analysis on the PO side, but you can see the same thing. We spend fifty million in purchase orders and four point seven million buses, one point nine instructional materials, Apple computers, instructional software, textbooks. And what we find when we talk to a lot of the small businesses, the diversity vendors, is what they're selling are things we don't buy. That's just as frank as I can be. You know, we go to these expos, outsourced, custodial. We don't do that. Landscaping services. We don't do our own landscaping services. The city does that. The trend in business and small businesses is away from commodities because they can't compete with the big box stores and they can't compete with the online retailers like Amazon. So most small businesses today are services. You know, the last time I went to a show, I had three companies. They do custom artwork framing. You know, we don't, we don't spend a lot of money on that. You know, there's just, it's just a matchup thing. But we take the time. We make sure that everybody's got an opportunity to participate in our processes. You know, we open up the, the pricing. Sometimes a small business will come in and they actually sell something that we buy. But when they see what we're paying for, because we're dealing with a much bigger company, they don't even waste their time participating in it. You know, so, but we do give everybody a shot at it. Do you have any questions on what I said?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That really concludes what we're presenting. And Carter's going to bring up the interactive spreadsheet and then Madam Chairman, that will serve an overview.
Ms. Wames?
Farrell, I sent a question in on February twentieth, and I don't, if you could advise me, I don't, I don't remember seeing the answer on that. Maybe it's somewhere or if you could give me a ballpark figure. It was, can I have the total annual cost of outside contracts for consultants, including training, advising, presentation, speeches, workshops?
I didn't ever remember getting that, but we would have to do some research on that.
Does anyone have a ballpark figure?
Anybody?
I thought I would get the answer today, so that's why I didn't send it.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Anybody in the budget staff?
I think it was answered. Yes, it was answered.
It was answered?
It was answered.
I don't remember this answer. Can you tell, can you tell me where it is? Yeah, because I forwarded it to the board and Dr. Spence. And, I mean, I copied them and I sent it to you. Okay, because?
I don't remember seeing that at all.
Okay, well.
I don't either.
That's okay. Because I wanted to use some of that, I wanted to skim off some of that from my request from the board right now.
I'm going to look it up. I didn't.
It's right here. Yeah, I don't know by. Okay, well, it's not much. It's only sixty-five thousand, so I think we could just?
That's all you want, yeah.
But for that part?
Take it from that line.
Okay, I'll wait till I present my case.
Okay.
When we're asking for suggestions.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I wanted to really, really try to get those, those four compliance and instructional specialists for special education. And the total of that is three hundred and two thousand. And that would allow all of our secondary schools to have one. Now they're splitting up their responsibilities. And if y'all remember, it started out as compliance, but Belika has changed it to kind of include compliance and special education instruction, helping the teachers in special education. So what I would like to do is, is, is I was going to go on that number that, that you gave me. And I was going to try to cut back on the consultant cost and then also use some of this travel right here on the piece of paper. If y'all know that in two thousand and seventeen, we spent nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars on overnight travel and costs for staff. And, um, so that was the actual what we spent. And the FY nineteen superintendent estimate of needs is, is two hundred and forty-two thousand more than that. So I would like to keep that number to the actual of what we spent in two thousand and seventeen and not go up. And then take that money to buy for special education, compliance, and instructional specialists. So all of our secondary schools will have one. So that's what I am proposing, to keep the actual travel that we used in FY seventeen, to hold that, at that number, not to increase our travel expenses that we send our folks to. And then that would leave us fifty-nine thousand dollars that I would like to take off of the total consulting costs that we, we spent, which I don't have that number. I was hoping to have that number. But I don't think it would be too difficult to take fifty-nine thousand dollars off that number. Combine those two and that would pay for the three hundred and two thousand for four of those special ed compliance slash instructional specialists. And if anybody has any questions, I'm sure Ms., Dr. Gatling, is Dr. Gatling here? Would answer because that's been on their wish list. And it was also, I think, what year of the audit, wasn't it in the audit? It was also strongly advised by the special education audit that we had years ago that that be accomplished in year one. So I would really like to stress the importance of, of moving forward on that.
Anyone else? So are we showing that on, up there?
Yes.
We're just showing it as we talk so we can modify or whatever.
So basically, we're, we're paying for that and just keeping our outside travel the same and taking fifty-nine thousand off of all our expenses that we pay for outside consulting.
Ms., Mrs. Rye?
If I could interject because I raised the question last workshop about the compliance specialists. And maybe we can have either Dr. Gatling and/or Dr. Spence weigh in. Because when I went back to check past workshops, it is a position that's getting reassessed, reevaluated, whatever adjective you want to use. And so I, so the question is, are we yet prepared to, is this the right time to hire the four or to, to wait and see this through this year, this reassessment?
I've, I've talked to the special education folks down at Alaskan Road and I talked to Dr. Gatling today and it's on her top three priorities. So I guess she can talk for herself then.
Mr. Edwards?
Well, can we not hear from the administration? They're sitting here.
Dr. Spence, would you like to reply to this?
Sure. That certainly was part of our conversation at senior leadership level when we were going through this, was that at the moment, because we're in the middle of retraining those positions and re-coordinating with our administrators about how those positions are used, that we didn't feel was the right time to add them. So that was one of the reasons we didn't.
I just want to remind the board, over the last four years, we've put millions more of local dollars into local budget. For example, we moved more than a million and a half dollars from Title VI, which is federal. Those funds are all for special education programs into the local budget a couple of years ago because the Title VI funding couldn't support those programs, those staffing. And there may have been a few contracted services in there. More than a million and a half dollars. You didn't see a change in the FTEs because the total FTEs were roughly the same. That's one point. We put more than two million dollars into CSEP because we had underfunded CSEP for years. And finally, over a period of a couple of three years, in the last four years or so, we put an additional two million dollars into CSEP. You, you don't necessarily see that as an increase in the local budget because we were using year-end monies and all kinds of things to shore up the CSEP payments. So my point is, we've put millions of dollars more into special programs. And what that's doing to us, and Dr. Spence and I have had a conversation about this, and it's hard to explain, it's complex, but we have a maintenance of effort criteria that we have to meet each year. And it's got three different components that they test us on. And it relates, essentially, they look at three different types of calculated formulas that we have to meet and we have to pass two of those three. We failed one this year. So what's happening, what that essentially boils down to is we have to spend in the following budget year, not one penny less than we spent in previous year in local funds. You, you can't ever go back and reduce your local funds on a per pupil basis, okay? You, actually, the total dollars can go down as long as the per pupil expenditure doesn't go down. So part of the criteria, part of the request for additional dollars and the reason administration didn't include it is part of their rationale was also that they were increasing, the student enrollment was increasing by a hundred and sixty-three students. That was not, it was only like eight students. So for those reasons, administration didn't include those things in, in the base budget. Plus, we had to butt those requests up against strategic class appropriation, FTEs for strategic class sizes and et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, I know. And I, I'm not saying we have?
Well, I'm just saying that, that's, that's our rationale, but why?
Right. And we have put so much in special education, but special education is so very, very, very expensive. But if you look at our, you know, data, the special education subgroup is, is the one that's struggling by far the most. And I'm not saying take away all that stuff. I'm saying I have kind of found where I think, I think it's more important to do that than it is to add a hundred and something thousand to travel and fifty-nine thousand dollars to outside consultants coming in. I think that's more important. If my colleagues don't, that's fine and I understand the reasoning, but that is my suggestion.
And I'm not saying don't fund it.
Yeah. Oh, I understand why y'all didn't have it in there.
We need to hear our rationale for why we did.
Yes, yes.
So could you repeat one more time exactly what it was you wanted to cut?
If you, well, if you look on the, this thing that was given to us today about the overnight travel, we actually spent nine hundred, I'm going to round up, well, nine forty-three, nine seventy and eighty-eight cents in seventeen. I'm saying keep that number the way it is and do not increase it to one point one eight six million. So that gives us two hundred and forty-two thousand. That will, and I'm rounding off, that will leave us fifty-nine thousand dollars, which I hope, would hope to skim off that number that I haven't gotten yet about the outside consulting, you know, fees. And that would come up with three hundred and two thousand. And that's how much it costs to get four of those special education coordinators.
So you're hoping to skim fifty-nine thousand from where now?
From all, from the total, it's outside contracts for consulting fees when they come in and consult our teachers, do workshops, do speeches, do everything, the outside piece.
But you don't know how much that is because?
Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah.
Yeah, your number, fifty-nine is good. That, that would balance it.
I can do math. Sometimes.
You math well.
Every now, every now and then.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I do. Madam Chair, thank you. Hearing what Ms. Wames is saying, I'd just like to say that I am concerned that the funding of special education is not fully funded, especially with the federal and state mandates that's coming down. And I want us to be aware or cognizant of these concerns about special education and the students that are, that are in compliance of these needs, that we would somehow start being proactive instead of reacting to what's happening. And we've had, we've had several conversations with parents and, and administration as well about special education. I would like to see us as well to be proactive in getting something done or having those things done and speaking to the fact that it was asked for additional training, such instruction of specialists. And I would ask if we consider one instructional specialist, would this, a specialist be mandated for reading, which is one of the concerns that's been asked to be implemented?
Dr. Spence, you want to reply to that?
Well, here's what I would say first and foremost. We're not reactive to special education. We are incredibly proactive with the work. Well, he- here's what I would say first and foremost, we're not reactive to special education, we are incredibly proactive with the work that we're doing with special education. I don't want it to be characterized during a budget conversation as being reactive, so um, I do want to say um, in in the, since the fiscal year fourteen, Virginia Beach has added fifteen million dollars to special education spending. So I don't want any conversation that's happening here to be misconstrued publicly as, as if Virginia Beach has not been adding dollars to special education in the city. So there's a fifteen million dollar add um, over the last four years to special education line items. All related to dealing with particular issues in CSET, dealing with things like we talked about last week with the tuition reimbursements, dealing with additional personnel costs, dealing with all of the things that that we have to deal with in special education. Our job, when trying to bring you a balanced budget, is to weigh the different needs of the division against the requests that each department makes. So it isn't just special education, it's made requests for specialists and for different positions. Um, and so we, we have to sort of balance all of those needs. When we're making those decisions, Farrell talked about the maintenance of effort, that certainly comes into play because we're getting to a, the point in terms of our local spend that it's, 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 it's pretty high. Um, because we're not seeing additional federal and state dollars uh, that are coming in for special education. And we also have to take into account other things, like what I talked about, which is that we're in the middle of of what has been a year-long overhaul of the PCST position. And trying to make sure that we have clear expectations for that position, that that position is functioning the way that we want that position to function before we add additional positions into the arena for that particular area. So it isn't, I mean, we can certainly do it, it's not undoable. Um, and I don't think the suggestions are unworkable, but I think it's just a function of of understanding that from our perspective, that wasn't the w- the best use of those resources and so that's why we didn't bring it forward at this time.
Anyone else, Ms. Manning?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things, I fully support Ms. Williams' proposal to cut the overnight travel budget and outside contractor expenses to fund those um, those coordinators. I believe it's way more important to spend money with our special education department than it is on overnight travel and consultants. So I just want to um, echo support for that. And then, are we also talking about CIP now, or are we?
We could do the operating budget first and then.
Okay, that's, okay, I'll wait.
Can anyone else like to comment on this proposal? I'm waiting. Ms. Ms. McLeod?
I have no problem with the proposal. Thank you, colleague.
You're very welcome.
I mean, but this is what, this is what, this is what you do at home, this is, this is what we have to do. And so, you know, i- i- if, I have heard no argument as to, from anyone around the table as to why we should can, you know, what will that, Dr. Spence, maybe you need to speak to that. Is if we don't, what, what consultants wouldn't we be able to have and I, you know, and and is that reasonable?
Yeah, difficult to speak to, it's a, so I don't have a record of the question and I apologize, I did just go back and look.
I'll fill out my phone, but nobody else.
Yeah, so I don't know what happened.
I did, I I looked it up today when I didn't have the answer.
Yeah, we just poked through and looked and we couldn't find it.
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay, um, it's a complicated question because it's a, it it, it goes across a huge swath of of areas, right? So it goes across any number of grants, if if we're talking about grant spending, sometimes you can say, don't spend it, sometimes you can't because sometimes the grants require it. And so then there, so it's a, and then, you know, we did an analysis, we pulled out the grant spending, we looked at the consultant spending that we think is what you were talking about, which is sort of outside folks coming in to help with training in particular. And that number's less than two hundred thousand dollars and it's been that way for a long time. So there's not a lot of extra money being spent in that arena. Cutting sixty thousand of that just simply means we're going to cut some of that work that we do in support of 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 teachers. Um, employee travel's the same thing, you know, if you, it seems like a big number until you sort of cost that out against the number of employees that we have, so um, and of course, the costs go up. But it's just a, it's just a matter of, and in this case, you know, saying we'll keep it at the, at the current actuals, I mean, I don't see a significant impact on that. The cost of travel goes up, so we'll have to approve a few less trips for folks and, you know, that's, like I said earlier, that's not unworkable. I think it's just um, being attentive long run, in the long run, to the notion of um, does the board feel, we we talked about this before, does the board feel like those things have value? Does the board feel like travel and training and professional development, both internally and externally have value?
Well, of course we do, and I think that's fair, and of course we do, however, sometimes you just have to say this year, we're not going to do it nor going to accomplish this.
As much as we're going to do it, but just, we're going to be, yeah, keeping it the same, is what, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not cutting all travel, I'm just keeping it the same.
Mr. Edwards?
This same methodology can be employed to generate more than enough money for a three or probably even a four percent pay raise. What we are doing is simply upfront removing what will be reversion funds at the end of the year. If you, if we take everything that we're budgeting in eighteen and cut it back to the actuals in seventeen, it's tattamount to upfront deciding that we're not going to have reversion funds. And we are going to simply um, bet on, Farrell, bet our reputations in terms of the potential deficits and grant juries and all that stuff. Um, and again, I'm painting a risk case scenario if we did that across the board. Um, I'm still a huge advocate of funding this, the pay raise and some other things with the additional money that will likely come down here from the estimate of needs. And could, I think, probably easily be uh, handled in the, in the reconciliation.
I agree, uh, we did, I did get a reliable source this morning, I indicated to me that we are going to get um, additional money from the state. Um, and it was a very reliable source, so I feel good that we will be getting, seeing some more funds coming in. I'm personally feel like the budget that we have is very balanced. I know last week I showed you all different ways of cutting things, because I was really trying to show everybody that I was serious about uh, giving our employees more than a two percent raise. I am still serious about that, but I feel confident that with the money that comes from the state, we'll be able to add to their um, to their raise um, when we do our reconciliation.
May I, may I play devil's advocate to you?
Yes, ma'am.
If there's money coming down, unless it's specific, and you may know this, I don't know if you spoke to someone on appropriations or where, who your reliable sources. But the, if, if you are feeling like it's a a large enough amount, you have been a huge advocate for going ahead and throw, and getting more kindergarten started. So the question I have, because it's also a, uh, you have to sustain it the next year kind of thing, and so if this money's coming in. So being that, I'm a little surprised that you wouldn't be encouraging us to go and speed up the phasing in of kindergarten. Um, with that money that would come in.
I'm supportive of the administration's proposal of what they've, what they've come across with now and um, as long as we're on track with that, I'm fine with that now. We're on, we're on the, we're on our way.
Okay.
We have twelve more schools for next year and I'm pleased with that and hopefully the following year, we still have funds to go with at least eleven more.
Exactly my point, hopefully we do, but if this money is coming from the state, you know, that we could go in and utilize it towards that. Unless it specifically says that it comes down and is only to be used for salary, that's different.
We'll have to wait and see how it comes down and how it's marked.
Because this is, you know.
I was told specifically that the state is aware that there is a teacher shortage, not only statewide, but nationwide. And so they are try, going to try to make an effort in helping with that.
Sure, and you and I had a good conversation yesterday about all the, you know, I don't, you know, the media and and us and everybody else. We talked about just, you know, the difficulties it is to be a teacher and all of the, you know, the requirements of being a teacher and now whether we're going to pack as teachers or not. And, you know, all of these kind of things, you know, oh, I wonder why no one wants to go into teaching, shocker there, you know, we, you know, so it's very frustrating that way. But back to the point of the the funding is that whether we put it into speeding up additional schools for kindergarten or teacher salaries, that money comes from the state. It's not guaranteed to have more from the state the next year. Either way, we have to come up with the resources to continue to fund it. When we get one-time money from somewhere, we have to make sure that we have the money the following year. So, yeah, so either choice we make, you know, could that money be used in more one-time spending because we don't know if we're going to have it the next year? What ends up happening is that the General Assembly happily sends us more money, we put it into the budget for teacher salaries, and then next year, surprise, we don't have enough money to sustain that. And then we have to figure out, oh, I guess we'll have to, it's an off-election year, let's ask for a tax increase. So I'm, I'm just pointing out, maybe I feel like I'm stating the obvious, but I just want us to think about that this, what happens the year after and the year after and the year after. So that's why I bring that up.
Right.
I'm actually, and I told you on the phone yesterday, Ms. Anderson, I'm perfectly happy with the budget that's been presented, I'm ready to approve and move on, but I'm happy to discuss as well.
Me too, I am too. So am I. We have anybody else would like to speak on this? Ms. Mr. McDonald?
You're just act surprised. So I I, I I find the, the numbers that were given to us on overnight travel interesting, not necessarily for this discussion. But the fact that between the adopted and the actual for seventeen, the difference is about twenty percent. And we run on about a two to three percent reversion, that's a lot. Do we, in in processing these numbers, do we have any idea of where we are right now as far as what we spent for eighteen? Wasn't sure if maybe that was noted somewhere and just wasn't included in this table, but.
I anticipate.
Well, current budget year.
It's only February.
Yeah.
Well, we, we started in July.
And it's June, we only have a few more months left on it this full year, it's.
I, twenty percent difference between what's budgeted and actual is a large difference to me, uh, so I wasn't, I mean, have we?
That's a good question, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah.
I don't have the details on that, but let me just say it, those, you have to realize those numbers fluctuate from year to year.
Sure.
One year it could be twenty percent, one year we could barely balance the budget. We'll do what you say to balancing budget. I'm saying, if you're, if you're suggesting that it's twenty percent a year we leave on the table, that's just not happening.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted the number just to see where it worked, right.
At some years, it's, we spend ninety-something, close to ninety-nine percent of budget. Some, you know, this, this spend is probably one of the lowest percentages I've seen. Sometimes those are affected by, we put a halt on spending because we think we might have some issues with overspending. But that's not the case in that particular year. Obviously, if we reduce the budget, we'll live within those budgeted dollars. But I, I don't think you could take twenty percent left on the table one year.
I'm a data guy, I want three years at least, but yeah.
Any more? So are we ready to move forward with the vote for this, or do we wait, um, do we just do a straw poll on how we feel on this?
We don't, we need a vote, we need a.
We're not voting.
No, we're not voting, but we could do a straw poll on whether or not we we uh.
We have in the past straw polled specific budget ideas to give guidance to administration.
I think that's what we need right now, so um.
And 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 again, I'm not asking for more money, I'm just asking, those four positions are only three hundred thousand compared to our budget. Of course, that three hundred thousand would do nothing for, you know, raises, of course, you know, because it's too low. Yeah, it's too low, so, but I think those four positions would do a lot for those four schools in special education.
Madam Chair, you could take a straw poll on both what superintendent testing need was originally proposed. Or, and you could take a straw poll on what uh, Ms. Williams proposed. Ms. Williams' proposal does balance the.
I understand.
And then we also had my suggestion from last week as well.
Okay, you might refresh our memory on that.
They have it saved.
Um, and there were others as well, unless.
We have a couple.
Um, okay.
I withdraw mine.
Okay, there's mine, the technology initiative, changing it from one-to-one access from first to twelfth graders to fourth through twelfth graders. And fund um, FTEs for high school to lower class sizes with ten, I believe we said ten FTEs, was that correct?
Eleven, ten, yes.
Seven hundred fifty thousand and then the rest going to give our teachers more money who have master's degrees.
Okay, so do we want to vote on, on that one first, let's have a straw poll on who would, who would agree? Yes.
And my question to the administration and and staff, can you verify, is the seventy, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand for the masters, does that accomplish what we need, Mr. Mira? How would you deter, how would you, what would you do? I need to understand.
The total cost, and 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 you're, you're saying masters, we're saying advanced degrees, which would be across the board, if that's.
That's what it said up there, that.
It says masters? Okay, thanks, Farrell.
So I guess, I guess.
Advanced degrees, okay.
How would you, this doesn't accomplish everything.
No, but what we could do is we could piecemeal it in, just like we did the unified over a series of years. We can chip away at it.
Okay, so this is to help chip away at that, it's the chip away plan.
Okay, so could I see a show, uh, Ms. Williams, go ahead.
So um, Ms. Manning, when, when you say fifteen, is it one point five million? Um, now, you're not saying take away all technology from first grade to third grade, or you're just saying use the.
One-to-one access.
Right, yeah, so you're saying what they are, what they already have, which is what, from that?
One.
One point six, okay, so they're, so they're still going to have the computers, a lot of, you know, Chromebooks or whatever they have.
They like the Windows devices mainly.
What was that, Ms. Cash, Dr. Cash, what?
The one point six to one includes Windows devices and whatever Chromebooks they have. Or iPads or.
A mixture.
Yeah, they have device, okay, thank you, I just want clarification.
Mr. Edwards?
Those school, those elementary schools that have one-to-one in those classrooms, we would be removing that technology. We would have to if our policy is we're never going to go to one-to-one. If we're changing our roadmap and we're not, our goal is no longer one-to-one, it would not be reasonable to leave the technology in the schools that 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 happen.
That's correct.
Well, and that, and that's why I have a problem, I don't want to take.
Right, and let me remind you that SOLs are given in third grade on the computer.
Right.
So.
Can I just speak to the whole thing for a second? So the um, it would, as as Amy was talking about a second ago, we would do, it's sort of what we've been doing for years and years and years in the division, which is kind of cobbling together the different devices, some of the older devices, the iPads, um, some, some Chromebooks for sure. To make sure that kids did have access when they needed it and could work it out um, K one through three. But this then wouldn't allow for a refresh plan for K one through three, so that would become problematic as those devices age. I I will say this, I was at a league meeting with the elementary school principals last week and we talked about this, I asked them that they had questions, this was the first question that came up. And so universally, I will tell you, your elementary principals are not in favor of this suggestion. And I did, I I mentioned getting some feedback and so while I was there, they asked the question, I asked them, you know, so what do you think about that, tell me why? I think you've heard from a few folks this week about that, but um, they just, they felt very strongly that that was the wrong direction.
Ms. McLeod?
Oh, never mind, my question's answered.
Okay, Ms. Manning?
Go ahead. And so, Dr. Spencer, are we still going to have that conversation after you get more feedback, or?
Well, the problem is, is I, as I talked about last week when this came up, I think, yes, we we can have a philosophical conversation about technology in the schools. I think trying to make philosophical, large-scale initiative decisions during the budget process is not a good idea. Um, I, it would be my take on.
Because I would like to know, I I was just at my son's wedding over the weekend and one of the nieces get, goes to school in Northern Virginia. And one was in fifth grade and her brother's in third grade and they, they do not have one-to-one. And they come from a very strong school district and so I would just like to see, you know, what other folks are doing too.
Right now, about twenty percent of school districts in the country are fully one-to-one.
It's only twenty percent, really, I would expect it to be.
So, you know, I guess oftentimes I'll, I'll say, do we get, do we get a vote on this, you know, like the one-to-one devices? We never really voted on the one-to-one devices, I'm told, well, you approved it in the budget. So that is why I feel like it's important for us to have this discussion now because we don't vote on it outside of the budget season. So that's the main reason I brought it up now, because if we fund it, it's happening. Um, and if we, you know, don't fund it, we don't vote on it, I mean, so. I have, I mean, my research has been a little bit different from yours, Dr. Spence. I spoke to an elementary school principal who, who does not support having um, technology one-to-one devices in especially our lower grades. Um, so, and and I've heard from a lot of parents, I think all, the whole board has, on how technology has been disruptive. So I think it is a conversation that we need to, that we need to have and we need to vote on it if we're not going to have it now.
I have not heard that from any parent. As a matter of fact, I remind the board that we got several emails this past week uh, showing us how teachers across the division were upset that we even discussed it, eliminating it. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a straw poll. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a straw poll right now on those people who support this initiative right here that's up there, eliminating one-to-one, one million five hundred thousand dollars. If you are in favor of cutting that on the one-to-one part of the budget, please raise your hand if you are in favor of that. All those opposed? Okay, we're leaving it in. Okay, the next proposal is Ms. Williams' proposal. If I have it right, uh, I would like a straw poll on eliminating two hundred and forty-two thousand from overnight travel and approximately fifty-nine thousand from consulting fees. If you are in favor of cutting that from the budget.
Tell them about what it will add in.
And it will add in, I don't remember the total.
Three hundred and two thousand for four PCST positions.
Three hundred and two thousand for four TPS positions.
Yeah, these would just be the compliance.
PPTST.
How many currently do you have?
Did we have, yes.
Fifty two, fifty, fifty-one.
We're adding four to that.
So you add four, so that that would cover all of our secondary schools as well.
Well, that was PTT, right? Positions. Right?
It's it's special education, compliance and instructional.
Okay. Raise your hand if you are in favor of making those cuts at this time.
Adjustments.
It's not.
Making those adjustments at this time then, okay? But it is, it is cutting those parts of the budget.
Can we hear from Dr. Gatling on this? Sure.
Yes.
So 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 thank you for taking on this. So I understand that conversations that had with your officer, with yourself directly about these four positions.
Yes.
That this is on your office's wish list. Is this a must for right now? Like, are you, would you stand there and 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 ask us for these four positions now or? I mean, give us some some insight on what this need is.
Well, I want to clarify that it's not on the wish list. It's on the five-year plan list along with several other items that were on the November twentieth memo, the program compliance supports specialist positions. To Mrs. Williams's point, it would allow us to have one in each of the secondary schools. Also included on that list were instructional specialist and also additional behavior support, be, board certified behavior analyst. So it was one of several that were listed for the first year in the five-year plan.
And what year on on that plan are we on?
First.
We are in the first, that's what I thought.
So it was one of several.
Have several of the needs been met already or is this?
We have some needs that have been met that are ongoing needs. For example, Farrell spoke to the increase in CSEP has been met. So there were, as I visualize, there are, I guess, the first four that were met. And so the next ones were specific to year one and then the next following with year two.
Um, Dr. Spence indicated that um, did I read, did I hear that wrong, that we need further training in this or further clarification in this or?
So we've spent this year, and Valika can speak to this as well, we've spent this year really working with our principals to kind of re-understand the position. Position was used in a lot of ways as almost the administrative fill-in in IEP development and creation. And the position really wasn't meant for that purpose. The position was really meant to ensure compliance with the IEPs once written, to make sure that teachers, teachers understood how to ensure compliance, to make sure that their instructional practices were aligned to the accommodations and modifications that are described in students' IEPs and that and that they were just engaging in best practice with students who have special needs. So that was kind of a bit of a reimagining and a re-understanding of the position for our for our principals. And so we've spent this year working with them to help them understand that and retrain and re-coach some of those people who are currently sitting in that position to understand a different role for themselves. Does that accurately reflect what we talked about?
Yes.
Would this be something that would be a must for next year's budget?
I think everything every department has submitted. I don't think that's, I mean, I'm I'm gonna help Valika out here. I don't think that's a fair question to her.
Ask her.
I think that Valika has listed on her list of of needs, things that are in the five-year plan in addition to other things that are ongoing needs that have to be met. So has every other department that has participated in the budget development process. All of them have had things that we have said we will be able to accomplish, given the projected revenues and things we will not be able to accomplish. But if you asked any department head, is that a must-have, they wouldn't be doing their job if they said nah. I just threw it on there for kicks, right? So it's not necessarily a fair question to ask her, I guess would be my my point.
Um.
But, you know, I'm not also stating that I have any opposition to the, we we can make things work. But and I think, you know, as Ashley said, I mean, it's, this is sometimes what you do. You look and find things and we, you know, we can make things work.
Ms. Riggs?
Well, can we make it work, finding it somewhere else and not messing, adjusting the line items? Can we find that somewhere?
I mean, these are ongoing positions, I'd say.
I mean.
No.
No.
You know, the typical opportunities for us to make things work are where we have either existing vacancies or where we have one-time costs and expenses that we can work into year-end costs or we can work into reversion dollars. Positions like this are, you know, we know they're gonna be ongoing. I wouldn't try to make it work outside of putting it into the baseline budget.
Ms. McLeod?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm sorry you went back up. I didn't notice we were doing that. So the question, I just want to clarify, and I think this is, I I walked in the middle of a conversation and I apologize for my tardiness. The question is by adding these four additional special ed coordinators, that means that every high school would then have its own versus having to share between. Yes or no?
Yes, but let me tell you what the current composition is. So it's program compliance support teacher, which is a teacher position that garners responsibilities for both instruction and compliance. As Dr. Spence alluded to, we reimagine that position based on the results of the audit. Currently, all of our secondary schools have a program compliance support teacher with the exception of Prentice A. M. Middle School in Virginia Beach Middle. They share with an elementary school. So it would help to create more of an equitable situation with our elementary schools, some of who are a little bit larger in terms of special education populations. So that's what it would do with that number.
Thank you. I I wanted to bring up many times during the discipline hearings, how many times we find things are concerning with some of our persons who are receiving, whether they have an IOP, IEP or a five-oh whatever and and what have you, five-oh. Four. Five-oh-four. I was gonna, anyway, I was gonna be four-oh and K, but anyway. So the, but many times we have, we have said in some of those that we're concerned that things get overlooked. And I just feel like this is an opportunity and I commend Carolyn for looking into this and and reading down the list. This is a very small number in the budget and and it is adjusting. It's not, it is take from one and give to other, but that's how you adjust. That is what a balance is, thinking your balance in elementary school, right? And so I think this is a great idea if this is going to truly, you know, benefit our students and to what I just heard her say, the equitable in the elementary school will be of great importance because hopefully then, you know, when they get to middle and and high school, they're, we're all better for it.
Um, Ms. Frye?
So again, in fact, last week I asked the question, this week seeing a way to make it work. And I would like to support this with the hope that it is a first step to getting, and I'm sure with the five-year plan, we will get to those other positions. But I think it sends a strong signal if this board could support these these four positions now.
Ms. Manning?
Uh, Ms. McLeod covered what I wanted to say. It's 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 kind of a balance. It's not like we're just, you know, grabbing the money out of thin air. We are, we are funding it from what I believe is a higher priority.
Ms. Felton?
Uh, I'd like to say to what Ms. Gatling said about the equity of this component, I would like to see that. Well, so oftentimes I am concerned about those students are not getting that particular need that they need. I'm like what Ms. Riggers said, was there anywhere else to get the money? Because I would like to see this be a part of this budget. I would like to see this going forward. It would speak well to the community that we are moving forward in best practice because it has come up several times and they are looking and they're asking as well, what are we doing? And that is a mandate and it's a law. It's much more pressing on me as well. So let's see it happen.
Thank you.
I personally would like to see it happen, but I also don't want to disregard or or let have the public think that we don't um, have any regard for professional development, which sometimes requires overnight travel, or that we don't regard consulting fees as important. However, we're not taking them away. We're not totally eliminating them and I quite understand that.
Close.
So um, I'm fine with, I'm I'm fine with it as long as, you know, I'm not sure that I'm that I'm happy with the wording, but if if we just give him the concept and maybe Dr. Spence can possibly, instead of eliminating all the way and saying we're gonna hold it to two thousand seventeen levels, I'd like to see it just, I know, I know. But I think I I would like to see Dr. Spence have the ability to find it any way he can through the budget, staying within this budget. And not and not, not saying, okay, we're gonna hold this at two thousand seventeen levels.
Well, I mean, that's what, that's what we have to do our job. And I spend a lot of time doing the job to find the money because I don't think it is fair just to come and say, Dr. Spence, find the money somewhere else. So that's why I did that. That's what I was supposed to do.
But maybe find by cutting, you know, ten thousand here or twenty thousand there.
If there's ten money somewhere else, I got another list to Dr. Spence.
So I know that he's already done this. He's already cut things here and there, so that was my point. But anyway, Ms. Manning?
So I want to clarify that this is not at the school level. This this professional or this the the outside travel, this is only at administrative administrative level departments. It's not at the school level.
Farrell? Farrell?
Yeah.
Well, that was my question.
Well, it's a total out-of-town travel.
Yeah.
So it affects teachers and paying them or funding teachers going to workshop somewhere for training and it's an overnight. Yeah, it does affect. It, as a matter of fact, there are probably more teacher expenses in in this spend than there are other.
Okay, well, that that wasn't my, what my question was, so I'm glad you clarified that.
This is Manning. Yeah, but it was and it wasn't, and I understand the confusion, but you have to understand that often when our teachers are going on out-of-town travel, that's being funded through our department. So our teaching and learning department is funding that travel.
So it's not being funded at the individual school level?
Very rarely. They don't have the kind of money to do that at the individual school level.
I just want to make sure that.
Still twenty percent more, so I.
You're good. Can you make it happen? Okay, so I would like a straw poll on whether we, oh, sorry, Mr. Edwards. We're good? Okay, let's do a straw poll on whether we're willing to um, to go forward with this proposal. Raise your hand if you're in favor. opposed?
Okay, we'll cap to that.
All right, I think we're ready.
And we get a.
That's a, that's a balanced budget. We'll go forward with that. We'll put the resolutions together for next week. I would hold up on the CIP discussion until you get the presentation that Tony's gonna do because it could affect the CIP numbers and anything to deal with the CIP.
Okay. All right. All right, so next on the agenda is accountability. Um, so we're only four minutes behind schedule, behind my schedule.
So I can see everybody. Good afternoon. Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the board, Dr. Spence. And here this afternoon, Tracy Legata from the Office of Student Assessment to review the standards of accreditation revisions as they relate to school accreditation calculations. So there's been some changes that we're going to. The Virginia Department of Education had four principles in mind when they started revising the standards of accreditation. Their goal was to provide more comprehensive, a more comprehensive picture of school quality, drive continuous improvement, build on strengths while addressing gaps and unintended outcomes of the current system, and inform on which schools are in need of assistance and school improvement resources. We're going to start with achievement indicators. Students who pass SOL assessments in reading, writing, math and science will count the same as they had in the previous system. However, the new system permits additional students to be included as achieving based on um, student growth on SOL tests and English learner progress. I'm not left-handed. I'm having a hard time with these. Sorry. I've moved it, so now I can be right-handed. Students who don't pass the reading and math SOL test, but they show growth on the assessment based on what VDOE is calling progress tables, they will count an achievement for reading and for math. English learners who do not pass the reading test and do not show growth on the progress tables, but show growth on the access for Ls assessment, which is our required annual English learn, language proficiency assessment, they will also count as achieving. These new rates are not referred to as passing rates. They are called combined rates. And the combined rates are made up of students who have passed the SOL test, who have shown growth on the SOL test and growth for English learners, as I described. I also want to point out, if you haven't noticed, that although it's still required as an assessment history, will no longer be included as part of the new accreditation system. So to break it down for you to help in a in a picture that all makes sense for you, we're gonna look at the students on the screen. If a student passes the reading, writing, math or science assessment, is represented by the gold students, they are counted in the numerator, which in this example would be sixty percent, six out of ten students passing. For reading and math, there is now growth. If a student does not pass the assessment, and those students are represented in green, but demonstrates growth using the progress tables that have been created, he or she is counted in the numerator. And in this example, that's one student, which changes the rate to seven out of ten, which is seventy percent. For reading only, if a student does not pass the SOL assessment and does not demonstrate growth, but they're an English learner who showed progress on the access for Ls assessment, that student would be counted in the numerator as well. And in this example, would be eight out of ten students, per eighty percent. If the data you see here on the screen right now was a reading test, the pass rate would be eighty percent. If the data represented on the screen was math, the pass, the combined rate, excuse me, would be seventy percent because English learner growth is not included in math, only in reading. And if the data you see on the screen was science or writing, there is no growth in science or writing, so the rate would be back to six, up to ten, sixty percent. Okay? There's more. Oh, but one of the indicators that we're gonna talk about on the screen are new to the updated system. Using the same combined rate calculations that we reviewed on the last two screens, data will also be disaggregated by reporting groups such as special education, economically disadvantaged. That was not part of our previous system. And this is the case for English reading and writing combined and for math. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Yes. The current, the previous slides we're talking about in all, the all-student subgroup, which we are used to seeing in accreditation. we are used to seeing in accreditation. The rate expected for math is 70%, reading and writing combined is 75%. Now, the system requires that our reporting groups also meet those benchmarks. So, that is our ethnicities, special education, economically disadvantaged LEP groups. Yes. The expectation is that those groups would meet the same 70 and 75% benchmarks, and that is just for reading and writing combined and math, not science. Another new indicator is chronic absenteeism. That will be calculated for each school separately, and a student is defined as chronically absent if they miss 10% or more of the school days in a year. The benchmark expectation is that 15% or fewer students are chronically absent. The graduation and completion index for high school is not new, however, the expectation of reaching 85% was changed to reaching 88. I'm sorry, not percent, but points. So, the expectation is increased for high schools, and our high schools are meeting that benchmark now. So, that's not new, just adjusted. And I'm sure you're all familiar with dropout rates. This data is now going to be reviewed as part of accreditation for high schools, and the expectation is that schools will have a cohort dropout rate of 6% or lower. And that's not all. One more. There will be a college and career readiness index that will be added to high school as an indicator. The definition for this is that students have received credit for advanced coursework, earned a CTE credential, or they have participated in a work-based learning experience. We're not going to see data for this indicator until 2021, 22, when next year's ninth graders become seniors. So, this will build into the system.
It was earned CTE, what else?
Earned a CTE credential, received credit for advanced coursework, or participated in a work-based learning experience.
Thank you.
So, those are all of the indicators, but unlike previous years, schools will be identified with a performance level of 1, 2, and 3 for each indicator. Level 1, which is at or above the standard, will be represented in green. Level 1 indicates a school's achievement on the specific indicator demonstrates performance at or above the benchmark, or adequate improvement has been made based on the benchmark. Level 2 is near standard or improvement from below standard, and that will be represented in yellow. Level 2 indicates that a school's achievement on a specific indicator is below the performance benchmark, but close to the range of measurement for level 1 performance. And then, level 3, which will be represented in red, indicates that the school's achievement was well below the performance benchmark. Also different than what you've seen, this screen shows the expected performance levels for the achievement indicators. You'll see on the left are the indicators. This particular chart has combined reading and writing, it has combined math, pass rate for science, the achievement gap for English reading and writing, and the achievement gap for math. Each row represents what a level 1, 2, and 3 performance level would look like. As a reminder, achievement gaps will be the combined rate, students who's passed and have shown growth, for each of the subgroups that we regularly, regularly monitor. Each subgroup's combined rate will be calculated individually. So, each of the, the groups that we monitor will have their own individual rate. However, one overall rating is going to be applied to, to that group of students, and that's why you see only one row for achievement gap in reading and writing, that is all the reporting group's overall proficiency level assigned, and then one for math. They will each, each of the reporting groups will be reviewed individually, and one overall And you'll notice on the bottom of the screen that improvement is also included, reducing the failure rate by 10% will give the student cred, or the school credit. These are the other indicators, the new ones that we talked about. Indicators on the left, and then the performance levels for level 1, 2, and 3. And then there is improvement defined in the bottom of the screen as well. The following information here will be important, as I share with you, and then the next slide, how our school would be rated based on this new system. When each school quality indicator falls in a level 1 or a level 2, the school will be identified as accredited. When a school has any school quality indicator in the level 3 range, the school will be identified as accredited with conditions. A school quality indicator within level 2 range, which does not improve to the level 1 range for four consecutive years, will be identified as level 3 in year 5. So, improvement is expected in the system.
And then they're considered non-accredited.
When a school or school division fails to implement the plan, the corrective action plan, or what has been proposed by the state for correction, that is when a school will be denied.
So, only when they're not being...
These are the only three ratings that will apply. And the only way to deny accreditation is to not do what you're expected to do to ensure growth and improvement.
So, if you're implementing the plan, even though it's not being achieved, they'll still consider you accredited.
They'll change the plan, and we'll keep moving forward, yeah.
Mr. Edwards?
That kind of remains to be seen, how that gets...
Okay, yeah, because I'm thinking everybody's getting a trophy participating.
Yeah.
So, anyway, go ahead.
Mr. Edwards is first to...
Has the state gone into benchmarking absenteeism across the state before?
No, that's, that's new. For the purposes of accreditation, that's new.
Right, well, is there a good definition, a good statewide definition of what an absence is? I mean, is it, is it excused absence?
They will be applying a full-day absence, excused or unexcused.
Excused, unexcused, or suspension.
Or is that...
Any of those.
Okay.
Chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism.
Missing 10% or more of the days.
Which means 18 days.
And any part of a day is...
Only calculating full-day absences.
Okay, so if they get their...
Half-day, that's right.
That shouldn't we had, they got there for fourth block, would have counted, right? Okay, that's, all right. But that's, is this new, though?
This is all new.
The absenteeism is...
Now, we've, we've had stuff before, but all of a sudden...
The only thing we had in accreditation before was the all-students pass rate. We saw the, the subgroup pass rates in federal accountability in the past, but not in state accreditation. So, that's even new. Those combined rates for all students and for all the subgroups, that's new.
Ms. Holt?
I think my question is about to be answered.
Yeah.
It was, how do we fall?
What, how did we do? So, under, what has happened is the Department of Education has provided us with data based on testing scores last year and the years prior, and applied these new rules to show schools and divisions how we did. The data indicated that 100% of our schools would have been accredited based on last year's data. And that means, you know, we are meeting, we're meeting those benchmarks. Now, there were schools in both green and yellow, and different, not schools, but indicators for schools in green and yellow throughout the division. I'm not sure that all divisions are going to be able to stand in front of their board and, and tell them that 100% of their schools would be accredited under these new rules, but we're pleased to say that we aren't. We provided the schools with their data, so that they can see where they fell, where they might need to do some additional work and make plans as they before, where certain schools have the new data for the new system. The next step is that the scores that students will receive this, this, that they receive this fall and this spring, that data will be used to calculate accreditation for next school year. VDOE will apply the old rules and the new rules for this transition year, and determine for each school which set of rules show them in a better light, and will, will apply either set of rules for this one year as a transition. But I want to remind you that we have 71 schools that are currently in the three-year cycle, where they will not be reviewed for accreditation, because they have been accredited for three years in a row, and that we only have 11 schools that will need to be reviewed for accreditation, and that list of schools is in your handouts tonight. So, we have one transition year, but in the fall of 2019...
We actually don't have that.
We do have it handy.
Yeah, so...
We'll get it.
We'll get it to you before your 6 o'clock meeting, and I'll get it to someone.
Okay.
We got it. But you, you have seen the list of schools in our previous presentation, but this was just a reminder, so make sure you get that. And the next step is that for fall 2019 accreditation, every school will be under the new, the new rules will be applied for their accreditation. If you have any questions, I'm...
Ms. Melnick?
Oh, how did I get there? Oh, I just wanted to say that the piece I'm most excited about is the demonstrates growth piece, that that's now a part of that, of this whole formula, and I think that that's really important, and we've been talking about that for so long.
So, I want to temper our enthusiasm a little bit around growth. This is a conversation I've been having at the state level that I'm pretty disappointed about. The high schools will not have growth built into their measurement, because the high schools, the, the thinking is that there's not a linear progression through math or language arts, and so therefore they don't, because they're considered separate courses, not kind of linear, they, they don't, they, they don't feel they have adequate means to measure growth. There are adequate means to measure growth that exist, but the state has not chosen to adopt them. So, at the moment, high schools, which deal with all of the other accreditation factors in terms of the graduation index, in terms of some of the other things that you saw there, the career and college completion, and then the dropout, will also have the added bonus of not getting growth measurements counted into their totals. So, it's something we're going to continue to advocate for.
If you, if you, if it's a requirement to take language arts every year in high school, how do you not show linear growth?
I can't tell you that I'm getting the answers that I want in that conversation. So, we're going to continue to have that conversation with the state superintendent and see if we can't get some...
I can tell you that there's only one, for example, reading, what you were, you were just referring to, there's only one SOL assessment in high school, and that's in 11th grade, so that would be, their last eighth grade SOL test would have been, their last one would have been in eighth grade to 11. And there is, and I know it's not a lot of students, but ninth grade Algebra I students could have the potential of showing growth, but again, that's not very many of our students, because most of them are taking Algebra in middle school.
Ms. Frye?
The, the state though sees enough of the distinction between middle and high school, Dr. Spence, because we have so many middle school kids taking high school-level courses, starting at sixth grade.
Yeah, I think that also causes part of the problem.
Ms. Weems?
Yeah, we've been talking about growth, like Kim said, you know, Dr. Merrill was really pushing it, you know, five, six, seven years ago. But I guess, can you clarify growth from like year to year, or first of the year to end of the year? I'm not sure how...
It is growth from year to year. A committee of folks, and I, and I can't speak to who, but have determined cut scores from one, what a score would need to be for one year, what it, what growth would represent the next year on the next test.
Okay.
So, there's, there are tables out there for reading and for math that indicate what the score would need to be in order to show growth.
Okay, okay.
And it's not always a one-point improvement. If you're in a range, you need to be in the next range for the next test.
Ms. McLeod?
I had one, I had one.
Oh, sorry.
One side said for the abs, I'm sorry, actually, one, for the absenteeism, one said 10%, but then I thought one said 15% or lower.
It did, but they're different. To be considered chronically absent, a student will have had to miss 10% or more days. The school's measurement is not to have 15% or more students in that category.
Oh, okay, 15% more students, okay. So, 10% for us would be 18 days, which goes by our guidelines of, is that still 10% per semester? Or you, or you fail, or whatever.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. McLeod?
And my questions were about the growth. I was at, wondering, could we see, I mean, is it, or is it just ridiculously crazy, the progress tables for growth?
I'm sure, absolutely, yeah.
That would be great.
I chose not to include them, because I didn't want to blow your mind, but absolutely...
Blow my mind, it's great. And then, and then the other question I had is, what is progress for an ESL assessment as well?
I have a table for that as well. So, based on the student's grade level, there is a cut for their expected growth.
And I guess my, my comment, and, and I was, I think this is great for the students especially, and, but my concern was that our schools that work so very hard to get their school in the credit, accredited category, they do that, and I don't want to take away from those schools who continuously try, but then to actually never really be called non-accredited, because you're just, still just trying, it, it, I, I don't want to take away from this, this, the schools that are accomplishing it. That's where I, my, made my trophy kid. It's about the school.
I had a conversation with some folks in the school improvement office at the state about this, and I don't get the sense it's going to be you can just continually try. I think part of it is they're evaluating with you whether or not you've made any effort to implement.
And that, yeah, I guess it's, it holds them accountable, so that's good, but yeah, so, but I mean, when they look at school divisions, or parents, or people are looking, you know, we, I hope that it takes some of the pressure of the teacher away, you know, this, this compelling need, you know, all the time, the fighting for being accredited, we want to be, but hopefully that will help, but I, I am concerned that for some, our schools are great, but other school divisions I worry about.
Yeah.
So, and that's not my, not what, I was elected, I wasn't elected for the other school divisions, but I'm a human, therefore, yeah.
This has been an ongoing dialogue, and I would say, I mean, I think for us, the thing that we'll have to keep a close eye on are those achievement gaps, that's something that hasn't been reported before. The, you know, I think it's, I think it's an interesting model. I think another thing that'll be interesting to explain and have to be very clear about, and I, I think you all get it, because you're hearing this, but the first time a school gets reported as accredited with conditions, I think that's an interesting message to send to the community, like in terms of, what does that mean, accredited with conditions? You know, and so, we're going to have to really think through, and we're fortunate right now, we're not in a position to have to think about that, but, but we certainly could be at any time, and so, we'll have to really think about how we communicate and message that with our schools.
I think that's all the more important, because what people have in their mind is accreditation with warning, is what we used to have.
Right, so it's very different.
Ms. Manning?
I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. The history is no longer included in SO, SOL accreditation.
In accreditation, but they are still required to be assessed as we had in this year's best.
So, what's the enforcement on that?
Yet another concern we've been talking about at the state level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnold, you're up.
Virginia is unique.
Can you not include all those slots?
It's in your board packet.
I, I want to remind us that Mr. Arnold's going to do a presentation here. I want to try to allocate about 30 minutes for this, possibly 40 minutes, but we have to cut off and go into closed session no later than 5:10, okay? So, if we need, if we need to, further questions for Mr. Arnold, I hate to ask you, Mr. Arnold, but we may have to ask you to come back for further questions after our formal meeting to this evening. But that will give us a chance to hear... But that will give us a chance to hear, I hear we have lots of parents and teachers who have signed up to speak on this issue as well, so.
I've got nowhere else to be.
Okay. And we will be coming in here if we need to finish up. This is where we will come back after the formal meeting for our workshop afterwards to ask more questions.
So just a reminder about this workshop. We, we are here to follow February thirteenth workshop where we were asked to identify, you know, what did we hear? Are there alternatives that we could introduce in terms of the Thurgood Replacement Project? And then we got follow-up questions from you all as well as some other constituents. So today Tony's here to walk us through some modifications to our original recommendation and then discuss the use of modular classroom units and also review with you again the onsite construction alternative. So with that, Tony, we're going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Spence. I'm handing out questions. We have assembled all of your questions, so we've got responses to them. At the, at the end of this, I will go through each and every question and read the responses for the benefit of the public. All right, thanks, Dr. Spence. So we're going to, we're going to begin with the modifications to our, to our original recommendation. All right, so you'll, you'll see the addition of canopies that are shown here in blue, okay? Over top of where, where the, what we call the boardwalk decking was shown between the portable classrooms, all right? We've also relocated, actually both restrooms farther away from the building, all right? That are, so they are more centrally located to the, to the portable classrooms. And so we, I'm no longer going to estimate from the lecture, all right? That gets your engineer in trouble. The, so we've got a good GIS group, and so we put dots on the map in there. So it's, it's about three hundred and five feet from the, from the farthest, in this case, it's, I think it's a fourth grade classroom to the restroom. So that, we cut that by more than half, okay, from where we were a couple of weeks ago, all right? And in talking with Sheriff Zigragin and her team, they're setting up the portable village so that the furthest portables are going to house specialty programs and teacher workspace so that, so that the kids are not having to walk the longer distances to the restrooms, okay? All right, so here are the, are the updated costs associated with this plan. And we've divided the costs into three areas. You'll see that, the setup of the, of the portables, which includes the cost for providing canopies. We've also, you know, if you move the portables farther away from the building, you've got more plumbing and some pumps and things associated with that. So you'll see those costs updated. We've also included, which you've not seen previously, a breakdown of the costs associated with removal of the portables and then restoration of the site is also shown. You'll see five additional staff positions at the shared campus will be added for these two years. These positions include two security assistants, an additional custodian, an administrative assistant, and then an additional crossing guard. So all total for two years, this shared campus option would cost about one point six million dollars. All right, so we, we looked at the rental of mobile modular classroom units. And let me be clear, the, these are portable classrooms. They're constructed the same way, they're constructed with, you know, simple two-by-four framing, stick framing. But they, the biggest difference is they're configured under, under one roof. And so the, what they typically do, and we've, this is what we're showing you, is that you assemble ten classrooms in a pod under one roof. It includes a restroom, so the kids in those ten classrooms don't have to go outside in the elements to go to the restroom, okay? So, so you, what you see here are, are images from other divisions. I think, I think a couple of these are actually here in the Commonwealth. But, you know, so you can, you can see there's a way to set it up. We did go to the, to the degree of laying out a plan. We know that you can fit a modular solution on the Hermitage site generally in the same area that we've shown you the fourth solution, okay? It's obviously a little bit more, a little more efficient in terms of space because they share walls. Okay, we've evaluated the costs for leasing modular classrooms, which you see here on this slide. Again, these costs are based on leasing four classroom pods of ten classrooms each with a restroom in each pod. We've also got a separate office pod where Cheryl and her staff, administrative staff, will be located. So essentially four ten-classroom pods and a separate, I'll call it a half a pod, where you'd have administrative space. Some of the, our previous modified recommendation, these costs are broken down into, you know, setup and the rental, the removal and the additional personnel. The personnel costs here are less as they provide for one additional security assistant versus two and no custodian staff. And that was a decision, a recommendation we arrived at collectively with everyone. You'll see that the total cost for this option is just under about two and a half million dollars. Just as an aside, we all, we did evaluate, because we've heard this and it's a natural thought, but why don't you just go ahead and buy the things? We evaluated the cost associated with the purchase of the modular units. That's, that's in round figures about, about three and a half million dollars, all right? But I, I want to be clear, we've, we've talked to one modular vendor who is under a cooperative contract. There are a couple of others out there, all right? These are, yeah, these are estimates, okay? And, you know, depending upon how they get configured. But we feel good about the, about the numbers that we're sharing with you. Okay, back to, back to building onsite or adjacent to, to the existing building. And you've, you've seen this enough, I think, I hope. So you've, you see here the alternative where constructing the school adjacent to while kids and staff remain onsite. And I need to, I can't, I can't tell you all enough, and I need to remind you that it's not our recommendation that we do this for several reasons. You know, there's, there's little to no outdoor space if you do this for the duration of the project. You know, you, I mentioned this last time. You start making room for the construction crews and everything associated with building a building like this and laydown areas. And, you know, you are, we are, we cannot do this without cutting down a significant amount of the, of the existing stand of trees out there. You know, we, that's, we heard that over and over over the course of the past twelve months while we were doing design tracks, the importance of the environmental sensitivity of that piece of property. I'll say this again, this is, this is the one, I'll be honest with you, this is the one that gives me the most pause. There, there are no sidewalks in Thurgood. It's, it's a, it is a neighborhood school. This is a great example of a neighborhood school. It reminds me a lot of Malibu, just with a lot more trees, all right? Kids walk to school. Cheryl's got fifty-plus kids that walk to school. They walk in the street, you know, they're, they're safe, they're, you know. But you add an element of trying to do this, it, it worries me as a parent, okay? Traffic circulation and parking is difficult today. You can envision what it will look like if you, if we attempt to build this building adjacent to it. It'll, it'll likely cut off the entry point, what I call the left parking lot. We built that about twenty years ago. It'll cut that off. It's going to likely have an impact on Cullen Road. And so that, that gives us pause. We've even talked about, and I'll show you the next slide, that, a conversation about if there's nowhere to park, you've got to provide temporary parking and should we tear the gymnasium down to accommodate that? That's just, I'm just sharing with you feedback and conversation that we've had amongst design team members about, okay, if we're going to do this, how do you, how do you go about doing it? It, the site, it prevents, you, you create this congestion, it prevents fire evacuation challenges. All of these things, again, as a professional engineer, they, they worry me. And that's why we don't, that's why we quite frankly don't recommend that, that we do this. All right, this, the light blue is the, is the, is the new building. The yellow is the kind of the hardscape, the sidewalks. The gray represents the new parking and bus queuing. And you'll see kind of in the pink, pinkish colors, the existing building. There's, you see five portable classrooms. You can, you can see, that's the little parking lot I'm talking about. I know that's where I park. Yeah, so we, here's a good parallel, all right? Something I think that everybody in, in this room can relate to. We predominantly do what I call, we call vertical construction, we build buildings. Now, there's horizontal construction associated with that. We happen to live near Unholland Road by Nemo Parkway, okay? Nemo was built first. Nemo was built quicker, cheaper, because you didn't have to keep traffic moving. It's easy, it's an easy road. It had a couple of bridges, not to say it's not difficult, but you don't really know what's going on. You don't have, you know, you're not, you're not imposing your construction will on the, on the residents as much. So think about Holland, all right? And think about what's been going on, they're late, by the way. Think about what's going, been going on for the past three years with Holland Road to all of the people that live around there and to the traveling public, all right? There is a, there is a good example of the impact that horizontal construction can have when you have to work in the same corridor. This is vertical construction, but the analogy applies. It's, it's the same type of thing. Not that you can't do it, it takes you longer, it costs us more, and it's more painful. Okay. Even, this is not our recommendation, but we did go back and to this alternative. We met, we spent an afternoon with the entire design team, a week ago Monday, in our office. And that's, you know, that's a team of professional architects and engineers that are, that are working on the project. That's folks in my, you've got two licensed architects, folks in my staff. We spent an afternoon talking about how do you do this? How do you problem solve, collaborating, what we're teaching our, hopefully our kids in these school buildings? And, and so, you know, there, there is a way to do it, like I've said, but squeezing a ninety-four thousand square foot two-story building in there is going to take longer, it's going to cost more. So here, here's what that means. The plans are close to ninety percent. The site plan, the simple site plan is actually, has been submitted and is under review in the Development Services Center, all right, the final site plan, all right? That typically takes two to three reviews to get it through. We get, try to get that in first so that we can have it done before the job goes out on the street, all right? That is in with the city. So building next to, we told you this before, we feel just as strongly, if not more, it's going to take another roughly four months to go back, redo the site plan, create phasing plans. And you, you see the, the costs associated with redesigning, more, more time to market. Time is money, this marketplace worries us, time is money. So that's, that's approaching a half million dollars, all right? The, so that's, that's upfront before you get it out on the street, all right? Assuming you do that and you get it out on the street, all right? Then what are the impacts when you show up and you need to build this thing next to? So the, the impacts to the construction will, they'll extend the duration at least eight months and adding only order of about one point seven million dollars to the project. This includes a whole host of things, you know, extended overhead, bonds, you know, insurance, construction phasing, remobilization, you know, contractors do things, have to go away, put the wells in, come back. I mentioned to you renting, the renting or purchasing, by the time you rent it, you almost buy it, a portable HVAC plant, you know. So there's security fencing, there's temporary parking. There's all these things that are associated with, with doing work that's done all the time in an urban environment, it's just like a road project. All the temporary things you see on a road project are applicable to a, to a horizontal project. And I, I cannot emphasize this enough. The, the community around there, the people who live around there. I told you the story of the simple drainage project in Forklift with the reinforced concrete pipe and the kid walking across the street. We show up en masse in that little community and do this, you're going to hear another group of folks. I told you a couple of months ago, this, not everybody's going to like this. Okay, I'm not even, you know, I've talked about the trees, you know, that's, that's important to folks, you know. So the, the, the increase, you see it, is estimated to be about two point two-four million dollars and it's, it's going to take us another year. So let me summarize, we've, we've shown you all three options. And so here you, you see on, you know, one, one slide that the difference between we've, the modified recommendation, it is, it is still our recommendation, still the staff's recommendation that we, we build a portable village behind Hermitage Elementary School. The costs associated with that, with everything that, that has been modified and added, you see it, that's one point six million dollars. The, the modulars are about two point five. And then building onsite is an additional cost of about two and a quarter million dollars. And we, we do not, we do not recommend that. So if, I, what I'd like to do now is just quickly, you guys have done a good job of staying on task, so I'll try to motor through these, these questions, if that's okay, and try to get to everyone of them.
Thank you.
We're going to put them out one at a time.
Yeah, just real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McLeod, real quick.
I just want to clarify, you said this is going to take three hundred and sixty days longer, but your costs here show for two years of rentals of the potential modulars, not three years, they take a potential.
No, they're separate, they're separate. The modular solution is, is a more expensive solution to housing children over at Hermitage.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't, that will not impact the building of the building.
You know what, I understand that, but because if we, oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Now my brain's right, okay, never mind, I'm good. Wouldn't be onsite and have the modulars at the same time. I had everything like this.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go through these real quick. I've handed them out. Some of them are in my wheelhouse, some are not. So the ones that are not, I'll stick to the script. In addition to the age and condition of the portables, how are they maintained, preserved, cleaned, tested for air quality, et cetera? We've heard a lot of this. The portables range in age from twenty-three to thirty-five years old. Like all the other classrooms in the school division, portables are cleaned on a daily basis. In addition, all the divisions' portables undergo a comprehensive inspection every five years. Inspection includes top to bottom. Thorough assessment of frames, walls, roofs, floors, moisture levels. Any potential issues are remediated immediately. The portables that are designated for temporary swing space will undergo a complete comprehensive inspection. as well as a thorough cleanup by our department, all right? When you move them, you move them, you set them back up, our maintenance crews come in. A lot of them get new floors, they get paint. We make sure that, that they're watertight, that everything's working, they're clean, just like a regular classroom. What is the detailed staff and plan for an adult, security slash custodian, et cetera, to continuously be available by radio to monitor escort restroom use? Thurgood will have three security assistants, one that is currently assigned to that school and two more that will be added during the two years of the shared campus. In addition, an administrative assistant will also be assigned to Thurgood to help monitor students and support the current administrative staff. An additional custodian will also be added. All security assistants, custodians, and administrators will have radios. Students will take bathroom breaks as a class and they will use the buddy system for emergency bathroom breaks. Each day, there will be two designated security assistants outside monitoring the grounds of the learning village, including the bathrooms. Also, the additional custodian will be stationed outside the restroom area with a radio. This custodian will monitor activity at restrooms and clean every other hour as well as any spot cleanups. If called for a portable cleanup, a security assistant or administrator will monitor the restroom.
Can I ask a question all about bathrooms, real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Because one of the questions was, are, are, these bathrooms are connected to sewer and water, correct?
Correct.
Okay. For somehow, somehow some of the parents got confused and thought that these were like porta-potties. And I've had several parents who...
These are rental bathrooms that are really nice bathrooms.
Okay.
I don't know any other way.
How many stalls are in each one?
There's, it's like 17 or 18. It far exceeds what's required by COVID, by two and a half fold.
Thank you, I'd just like to put that one to rest, thank you very much.
Is there another location that would be more ideal for the Thurgood Learning Village? Some suggestions from constituents include the tri-campus area or next to Bayside 6, would this alleviate traffic issues and pleasure house and safety issues from North Hampton? Outdoor space at the Bayside 6th grade campus is more limited than Hermitage, which means it would not be able to easily accommodate the learning village without impacting the academic programming for both schools. In addition, with Bayside 6 operating on a middle school schedule, it would make sharing indoor spaces and resources much more difficult. Plus, placing kindergartners indoors would mean having them alongside sixth grade students as to oppose fellow classmates their age. For the tri-campus, Diamond Springs and Newtown are over capacity, which again will make the placement of the kindergartners inside the building more difficult. Williams also does not have the space inside the building to share learning spaces. At all three sites, we have increased traffic concerns for these neighborhood schools and there will be a lot, and there will be larger increases in travel time for the Thurgood community.
And I...
Go ahead, quick.
And I guess that would be the same for Louise Lux for some part too, all those, the indoor space.
Correct.
Thank you for answering that.
How many students have or will be displaced from portables at other schools if the portable village plan moves forward? No students will be impacted at the elementary or middle school level because the portable scheduled for removal from these schools house specific programs that could be moved to available space in the building. One-day art, music, remediation, et cetera. At the high school level, the removal of the portables will impact a total of 2,264 seats across 56 course blocks at six different schools. Two schools had no students impacted. For context, this represents less than 3% of the available seats in our high school master schedule. It should be noted that some students may have more than one class in the same portable and/or a student has been moved for just one course. As such, the number of seats is not reflective, reflective of the actual number of students impacted. Eleven of our 12 comprehensive high schools are under capacity by a total of 2,279 students. The use of portables at our high schools has created additional space and limited the need to share rooms inside the building. However, please note that sharing classroom assignments is not uncommon at the high school level. What is the detailed plan to boost wireless for Thurgood students in the portable village and what is the cost? The wireless network will need to be built for the portable village for the Thurgood elementary students and staff. There will be a fiber backbone feeding multiple distribution points with wireless access points and data drops in each of the portals. This will cost an estimated $120,000. Wireless is getting better. What is the plan for tornado emergencies and has it been timed? As previously mentioned, in case of weather, of a weather emergency, Thurgood students will shelter in place inside the interior hallways of the Hermitage building. The fire marshal has been on-site and has shared his confidence that all students would be safely housed inside Hermitage Elementary School during a weather emergency. For some context, during its last drill, it took Hermitage Elementary School two minutes and 48 seconds, that's impressive, to exit the building to where the learning village would be. In theory, the reverse would take a similar amount of time. School administration is confident in its operational procedures and will conduct drills the first week of school to time getting students and staff into the main building and provide an actual timeframe. As is the case at all schools, Thurgood's emergency plans will be reviewed following the drills and modified as needed to improve response times and efficiency. Where will the CSEP classes be relocated that were at Hermitage? Has this issue been discussed with those parents whose students are in the CSEP program? The CSEP classroom in Hermitage will be housed at King's Grand Elementary School beginning next school year. CSEP is a regional program that the school division accommodates at schools where space is available. Changing school locations is not unusual. Information about next year has already been shared with the CSEP's regional director, who handles communications with families in the CSEP program. What is the swing space plan for projects? This one's in my wheelhouse. The next school scheduled for modernization replacement in the school division's capital improvement program is Princess Anne High School. The current plan calls for Prince Anne High School staff and students to occupy the former Kellam High School building, if vacant, for three years while Prince Anne High School is replaced at its current site. Prince Anne Middle School, which is currently housed in former Kellam building, is scheduled to move, be moved into its new building in time for the 21, 22 school year. Of course, this schedule is subject to change based on funding in the capital program. You've seen that over the past decade, projects get pushed back, it's based on resources. To the broader question regarding swing space, plans are developed on a case-by-case basis and are dependent upon the scope of the modernization of the replacement project. Almost done. What is the size of the music room and how is PE going to take place in that space? Where will music be for Hermitage? Hermitage Music Room is 56 by 36, that's a little north of 2,000 square feet, it's a big room. Thurgood is creating its PE schedule so the classes can best utilize both the music room and the multi-use room for PE. The schedule will also split the grade levels to accommodate both spaces. Staff is planning to utilize the music room to check in students and give initial instructions for the day's activities. Then the PE classes would be able to break out in groups using the multi-use room, music room, and when weather permits, outdoors for the day's lesson. There's nearly three acres of outdoor space on the site. Hermitage's music classes will be moved to an open classroom inside Hermitage Elementary School. All right, folks, that completes the Q and A. I'd be happy to answer any questions, we're right on schedule.
We've got 10 minutes for questions, but we will come back if we need to for more questions later on. I want to, I want to just tell everybody that I went to Hermitage today. I visited the school, I walked through the spaces, and I was totally impressed and could totally understand why Tony and his crew picked this campus above any other campus to house this portable learning village. It was apparent to me that that music room per se is a very large space. I was very impressed with it. I also walked into the multi-use room, which they're planning to use for lunches, et cetera. And it was, it's more than adequate for their lunch space. So I was very impressed. The principal of Hermitage walked around with me, she explained several things to me. We walked outside. I noticed that the grove of trees next to North Hampton Boulevard, which are a pretty thick grove of trees over there. So it eased my mind, because of course we've had questions from parents who've said, you know, catastrophically, you know, what if some tractor and trailer runs off the road over there and, you know, runs into the portables? I feel certain that a tree would stop a tractor and trailer before it ever got that far, honestly. When you look at that, at the amount of trees that are out there. I was very impressed with the whole concept. And I'll tell you what, I had reservations, because, you know, parents put doubt in my mind as well. We got, I read every single concern that came through, a lot of concerns. And they put doubt in my mind at one point too. But I feel certain that we can make this work and I feel like we're doing the right thing with the portable village. I have to agree with, with administration's recommendation to go with the portable village, especially with the accommodations we've made now with, with the walkways being covered and the restrooms being located closer. I feel real confident in that, so. And the other thing that I was told by the principal of Hermitage, and I just want to tell you this, she said that the PE teachers at both schools have, have worked together and they have had, had conversations about possibly Hermitage PE teachers and Thurgood PE teachers kind of combining their lessons sometimes, because there may be times that maybe Hermitage might want to, might be able to believe or not go outside and then Thurgood could use the gym itself, the big gym. Not that they're planning on doing that all the time, but, but there may be times that that gym is vacant and could be utilized by Thurgood. So I felt good that they had worked together and come together to solve that problem. And I, you know, she, she was, she was very positive toward it. Anyway, anybody else? Ms. Weems?
Yeah, thank you, Tony. I think the covered walkways and the bathroom where sentry located are huge because you've heard so much about that, so I thank you for adding that, many people wanted that. Okay, the material of the modular, it's basically, I know the two by fours, but like the actual, I don't know what they're made out of, but whatever, the material's pretty much the same, so it's basically all the same.
Yeah, it's, it's the same, they just share walls and they're under one roof. And, you know, they're, they're newer.
Right, they're newer.
They're newer.
Right, okay. And then so, and then each, of course, door would be locked on the portables and/or modular, each door. Okay, the buzzer system that we're talking about, that wouldn't individually work, obviously, on the portables. So it would just still be, it would still be at the entrance of Hermitage and then the entrance that Thurgood parents are going to go through?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And then remember the rest of that property being, so in order to access the property, you got to go through that entrance anyway, because it's needed.
Okay, and then, so with the swing space, my question is, so if we use, if we have to use, if we decide to go the modular route, you would, if you use it two ti, two times, that's $5 million.
If you...
Yeah, I mean, if we, if...
It's 1.5 to rent it.
Well, you got to set them up.
Yeah.
Let me kind of simplify this. When you own an asset, like we own these portable classrooms, and folks, the plan all along for us has been to reduce the number of portable classrooms, moving forward down to about 40 or 50 for this very purpose. Right, and whether it's 20, it die, or, so they've served us well, we take care of them. You own the asset, we pay to move it. If you rent modular classrooms and you, and you want to do this when you do a swing, it just becomes part of the project. It comes, it becomes a capital cost. It's not an operating cost, it doesn't, it doesn't fall in Farrell's side of the ledger. It becomes a capital cost.
Well, to buy it, buy it would be 3.5 million, but to rent, I'm just saying...
There's nowhere to put them.
Okay, so that was my question, so you couldn't buy them because you don't, you can't store them.
You don't need them, you don't want them.
Okay. And then, okay, and then thank you for answering the question about the other schools, because I know a lot of people, if you look at it, it appears that other schools have so much space. And then when you get down to the rooms, and I'm very familiar with those two rooms, and I know the PETs at Hermitage rock, my granddaughter loves them, so I feel good that that was so nice to hear.
We haven't explained well enough.
Right, that's, yeah, that, right.
We've learned that, we have not explained.
So next time, we're going to have a plan to do this the next time. Right, that's fine.
Ms. Malmick?
So I've spent my entire adult life in construction zones. But I also live in a, in a walking neighborhood. We do in Christopher Farms have one side of the street with a sidewalk, but even then, I would invite you to, to come to Christopher Farms at 7:50 on a weekday morning and you will be shocked at, A, the number of parents that drive their kids to school and how the line of buses and cars goes from the loop in front of Christopher Farms out down the entrance and onto Holland Road. And it is...
We saw the zombie die too.
Yeah, it's, it's a nightmare. And so when I saw the picture of no sidewalks, that had always been my main concern was, what do we do if we kept them on that property? But to see no sidewalks at all is very, very scary to me.
Ms. Manning?
Just a couple of questions, that, one that I received today. Will a special needs pre-K program remain at Hermitage?
I'm going to defer to the educators.
It's actually going, the early childhood special education program, is that what you're referring to? It's actually going to Shelton Park for next year.
So I, I, one of the teachers was very concerned about that because they love doing that program there at Hermitage. So that's a resource or a program that they're losing that they're very disappointed about.
That students aren't losing it.
Right, exactly. So I, I'm very thrilled to see the answers to number two. I think that is, these are the biggest questions and concerns that we, or at least I know I have, been hearing from parents is regarding the bathrooms and the safety issues with kids going to the bathroom by themselves. So according to this, it looks like there will be an adult stationed and monitoring the restroom all the time. All the time, there will always be someone here, so very, very pleased with that. And there's someone there to keep it clean. So thank you for providing that additional information. And will the portables that are being moved from other schools be moved back to those schools in two years? Or what's going to happen?
I think we'd have to assess it from an enrollment perspective in particular. Most of our schools that we've moved those for have projected declines in enrollment, and so they may not be needed at all. I mean, and it, really, right now, they're not needed. We've got plenty of space within the buildings to move people around. It's just sharing classrooms, it's a nice luxury to have. And then there's, of course, the additional costs associated with moving them back over. So it's really looking at that time and making sure we're on the same timeframe, looking at the projected enrollments for the buildings.
Okay, and then my last point I'd just like to make that this, so from where we were two weeks ago to now for the portable village in cost on the Hermitage campus, we're up about $600,000, correct? Because the initial cost was about a million, including the teardown, and now it's going to be 1.6 million, correct?
We did not, you didn't see, the, the removal is a year-three cost, so we didn't provide you the removal cost two weeks ago.
Correct.
So, so that's new. We, so there's...
They're all along, it's not...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, you just haven't seen it. So that was, that was not embedded in that number, which is your three cost is now in there. You've, we've added more personnel, we've added, you know, you add canopies, you know, you, you move restrooms, you got to pump, you got to, you know...
So the added cost is 600,000, correct? Approximately, from what we thought to...
You're comparing half of the orange though.
Yeah, that, that...
The third year was there, but not shown.
Just not shown.
So that's not an increase.
I wouldn't...
Right. Probably not 600,000, it's less than 400,000, exactly. Oh, year three, I see.
I think it's between, it's, it's only order of about $350,000.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, great, that, that was my question, thank you.
Ms. Riggs? And then this is the last question until, until after the formal meeting, because we really do need to go to close. It's very important that we do close.
It's not a question, I just think it's something that we need to recognize. And I know that the two principals of the schools, Cheryl Zegren and Angie Minari, when you say it right, have both spent a lot of time, I mean, I know today, just today, but all the days, that they have worked through this and been here at all our meetings, have just spent a lot of time and we just would need to appreciate and thank you for the support and work that you've given us. Thank you. Thank you.
And one last thing before we, before we go into close. Ms. Williams, you will be, you'll get the first question when we come back in here, okay?
It was just a comment, but thank you, I will.
Tony, I heard that this week you've got an award. Want to tell us a little bit about it real quick? Do you have 30 seconds?
I don't know what you're talking about. Probably something I told it. I probably got credit for.
Okay.
What was it? What was it?
It was a design award.
Design.
That's why the design award.
Nice. Okay. All right. All right. Mr. McDonald.
Um, Chair, I move that the school board adopt a motion to recess in a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings, law by section 2.2, 3711, part 8, paragraph 7 and 29 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for a legal matters, discussion of or consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion,